The regular Evlith City Council meeting scheduled for 9:00 AM, January 5th will now come to order. First order of business, where's the city attorney?
Good morning, Mayor.
Roll call.
Councillor Rowsey, Councillor Coivinon, Councillor Purpich, Councillor Lilis, Mayor Visalovic.
Item C, minutes of truth in taxation hearing, December 6, 2022. Anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes or changes?
Have we heard any feedback from our response, or did we send a letter to the county?
The minutes are going to them.
Okay.
They will go now after you approve these. I've spoken to a couple folks about it too already.
Any further discussion? Not, I'll call for a motion and we approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have support.
All support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of today's agenda. Anybody have any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as it stands.
Make the motion, Brian?
Yes.
Motion made by Lilis, we have support.
Support.
Court by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. No appointments or presentations, approval of consent agenda, which is payroll, December 1st through the 15th, and claims for December 2022. No one has any questions, a call for a motion that we approve tonight's, let me approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. No public hearings. We have no unfinished business and we'll jump up to new business. Appoint acting mayor. Do we have any volunteers here?
Up sleeves has been...
Joe, are you still volunteering?
Yeah, it doesn't bother me. You know, I didn't have to do anything last year, so let's go for two years again.
Year before, you were a little busy though.
That's all right. You came back and rebounded just fine.
If no one has any questions, I'll call for a motion and we appoint councillor Coivinon as acting mayor.
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item two, designate official newspaper. And you're recommending the quotation from Hometown Focus?
Yes, they do, John Corse.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or discussion? If not, I'm gonna call for a motion that we designate the Hometown Focus as our official paper.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we got a support.
Support.
Court by Rowsey, any further discussion? Jesus Christ. Did we get a motion and a support for that step?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, designate depository. And the recommendation is Miners National Bank of Evlith as depository for the city of Evlith for 2023. Anybody have any discussion on that? If not, I'll call for a motion that we designate the Miners National Bank as our official depository.
So moved.
Dueling. I'm supporting and Kevin is moving.
Wow. Motion made by Purpich, support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Appointment to the Evlith, Virginia Airport Authority, don't everybody jump up at once to get on there, you know? What the hell is... God. Joe, looks like you and I and the chief are the victims for this.
You know, I was just thinking that because I didn't see any hands up or any clearing of throat, so I guess I can do it. If we all go together.
Well, as you say in everyone's life, a little rain must fall. If no one has any objections, approve the appointments to the Evlith, Virginia Airport Authority, myself, councillor Coivinon, and Chief Lindy. You have a motion to support that lineup?
All support.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number five, city council board and liaison appointments. Everybody have a chance to kind of look over that? I think at some point in time, we're talking, we might have to have a workshop and maybe some of these, we can just probably cross off, they've been inactive for so long.
Well, there is, there is no joint rec board anymore, so.
Yep, it's...
But on that note, was not the school supposed to get back to us? The school is supposed to get back to us on having some kind of citizen group be part of the...
I don't know if they were supposed to be back, she asked me to remember the talk.
They were, both the superintendent and the athletic director mentioned that at the time that they were willing to work with people from both, all the communities as part of that community education program that they have. He did, he did, he did, they did state that. I forget which meeting it was at, but they did state that and we were gonna have follow-up so that we wouldn't have the controversy we had with the Hippodrome and the convention center and getting more, getting the communities more involved by having an at-large committee be part of the rec, you know, and I don't know if they even have that.
I hope nobody was waiting by the phone for a call.
No, but they, they did mention that they were gonna...
That's what I thought too.
Because we talked about it, Bob, you and I, and
Yep.
when we were up here for one of those meetings that we had, so.
You need, you need community input on those type of programs.
Yep, so the, the item on the agenda is the, the board appointments. That, that should be taken up separately and maybe at the workshop the mayor was mentioning.
Well, that, that's just part of the recreation
Yeah.
board, which we no longer have, so.
Well, we could just, we can change this anytime we want, but maybe just to move things along. Anybody have any problem if we just approve this as it's printed? You might have to say, have a workshop one day, look at it some more detail, what we're gonna have, what we're not gonna have anymore.
Are you, maybe we drive that first since it doesn't exist? That's an official...
Maybe we should just leave it the way it is until after we have a workshop.
Yeah, then we'll decide what we're gonna call it from our end.
Right.
This is who we have.
Okay.
Spend a little more time on that and decide how we should structure that. Any other changes or recommendations? If not, I'll call for a motion for the time being that we approve the city council board and liaison appointments.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we have a support.
All support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, resolution appointing a responsible authority and assigning duties. Jackie, you're volunteering again, eh?
It says responsible.
Well, call for a motion that we adopt a resolution appointing a responsible authority and assigning duties.
So moved.
Motion made by Rowsey, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, independent contract between the city of Evlith and Anthony Jeffries for zoning administrator services. Do we approve this every year or do we vote for longer than a year? Year to year?
Year to year.
Oh, okay. Anybody have any questions on Tony's contract? It looks the same as it always does. If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve the contract between the city of Evlith and Anthony Jeffries for zoning administration services.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do we have a support?
All support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Independent contract between the city of Evlith and Teresa Albrom for EMS operation supervisory services.
I'll be abstaining from this vote?
Yeah.
I will so move because I really think it is a good thing. Because councillor Lilis and myself are on this and we don't get called like we used to since you've been there. So I really think it's beneficial to us. So I will so move.
I'll support.
Motion by Coivinon, support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number nine, Alice Location land licenses, Alpha Belly and Peterson, Sleaze Sportsmans, and OSI Environmental.
I will be abstaining.
One, one thing about the land licenses, do we do any of the private ones anymore with residents or down there or?
No, it's probably been a couple, two or three years, I think, because they don't want to pay for the insurance.
Okay. Yes, I was wondering about that. If no one has any questions or recommendations, call for a motion that we approve these land licenses?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we got a support. Court by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, second reading of proposed ordinance rezoning certain property within the city limits of Evlith. Anybody have any questions or thoughts? Well, then I'll consider this the second reading, call for a motion that we accept the second reading of the proposed ordinance rezoning certain property within the city of Evlith.
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 11, resignation letter from Scott Lossing, mechanic. How long has he been here, Jerry?
About two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
Anybody internal, internally go for it?
I highly doubt it.
Well, we have to go through the procedure, have to post it for seven days and and then you can put it out in papers almost. Yeah, I hate to see Scott go, he's done a good job with this, he's a good employee.
So my apologies, we intended to hand you a new copy and it didn't get given to him yet. Where he's changed his final date to the 13th.
Of this month?
Yes.
So instead of the 5th that you have, it's the 13th.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll have to have a brainstorming session one of these days because it seems like there's now, there's a constant turn with everybody, you know, around the area. If no one has any changes or comments, I'll call for a motion that we accept the resignation letter from Scott Lossing and send him a letter of thanks for his service.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Rowsey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 12, authorize city staff to post internally, externally, if necessary, to fill a vacancy created by opening for a mechanic and any other positions as they become available.
So moved.
Motion made by Lilis, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 13, application for exempt permit for Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association at Evlith Elks Lodge for February 4th, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Last item under new business, resignation letter from Doug Hartmark, firefighter. So he hasn't been here very long, John?
No, I believe...
Oh.
I'm sorry, I usually look it up and write it on there, so I don't recall.
He's moving out of the state.
Seems longer than that, but I'm not sure.
No one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we accept the letter from Doug Hartmark, firefighter, for his service and still send him a letter of thanks even for the short time he was here.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Court by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of new business. Anybody, I suppose there's not much for any committee reports. December is kind of a quiet month, any commission or committee reports? Anybody have? You know, we had one airport commission meeting, but that was kind of just basic routine items covered.
We had EDA meeting.
We did have one there?
We had some contract negotiations and that went well and they got their new snow removal machine, which I signed the check for, which made my eyes bug. And everything else is going quite well. That was probably HRA? That's, no, was that 88? Yeah, we got our EDA meeting coming up this week. HRA, I stand corrected. Please make that a lot.
Are you amending the minutes?
I have to, I made a mistake. First one on the... That's H, H, that's H, that's the water tank area.
Yeah.
That's always one day after our second meeting, so you get it a little late.
Yeah, it's, I was surprised in December, you know, kind of the butt daddy's with all the holidays and things there. Get anything done out of that? Because I haven't, I got a few things about after the first of the year and I'll get going on some of our projects and some meetings and... But John, you got anything else to bring up there?
No, sir.
Joel?
Uh, not really, we got the same cast of characters here now for this year, Joel and Val and... So I'm actually looking forward to another year and let's hit her good.
Jim, you got anything to add?
Uh, no, I'd like to remind the citizens of Evlith to make sure that they keep their sidewalks open and avoid blocking traffic in any way by piling it up on the intersections. Our crews are trying to get by and fix up the roads, get them fixed up for the next little storm before anything else happens. I would, I'd like to see a little bit more continuity between the city crews and the uh, maybe the police department or for traffic and, and especially on the high-traffic avenues like Jones, Grant, and Adams, especially Adams with the hill the way it is. I was working on my house yesterday and the boys were doing, trying to do the job and cars interleaving between the snow berm and the center of the road. Couldn't decide which way they wanted to go and there's always a road open going down the hill, just go to Grant, you know, while the guys were working. But now they gotta turn down and go down Adams Hill or come up Adams Hill. We can block Adams from the bottom and from the top and hope people take a different route while the guys are working, that would, that would help out. And I'm sure Jones Street will be the same way, front of the schools and everything. Another thing is that uh, it come to my attention that some of the bus routes have been changed and where they were on the corner of Cleveland and Adams before picking up kids, they won't do it now because they can't come up the hill with the bus and, you know, for the life of me, I don't understand that. They came up Adams just fine today, I don't know why they can't pick up the kids, but there were I counted 10 kids walking up from Grant and now they have to walk down to Grant to get picked up by a bus. Now a bus on a busy intersect, on a busy street like Grant in the morning, doesn't seem like a very good spot to pick up kids, in my opinion. So if we can do some coordinating with the schools, Jerry, and see if we can't figure out what the heck these routes are and get these kids off of busier streets and get them where the buses can pick them up, I think, you know, we should probably do that. I'm gonna get a call into one of the members here.
You should, the buses are getting bigger and bigger. You got a 50-passenger bus and there's six heads in there when it goes by you.
Yeah.
And you got a bunch of new bus drivers, probably two.
I don't know, probably, but if we could get some coordination when these guys are working out on the streets, I think, you know, I think we'd help out a lot.
Yeah, you're right, because the kids used to get picked up at the bottom of Douglas and now they're on the corner of Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that doesn't make any sense to me. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Who's the traffic director up there?
I don't know.
I don't even know anymore, it's, since they merged. Seems like it's a revolving set of duties, who's got what to...
I think Hoagie still has a lot of...
He's still telling them where to go and what to do.
Just wanted to...
I have reached out to the city and asked them for a bus where they pick up the kids working out this year. So we can try to clean up everything.
Yeah.
I have reached out to a place.
That seems typical.
But it's not white then, that's a...
Okay.
Well, the only reason I know that they pick them up on Grant is I got three of them that I think want to take me out because I hollered at them because they're inside the bank at 6:30 in the morning when it's 40 blowout, opening and closing the door all the time. They're in airplane and I said, you can't do that.
Jim, you got anything else?
No, that's, that's all.
Brian, you got anything?
Well, I get, wish everybody a happy new year, happy, safe and healthy new year. All of our staff and all of you folks here and all of the public. And we have an EDA meeting this week scheduled, I believe.
Where do you have those meetings at?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
It's next week.
Oh, it's next week, okay. Um, we're gonna be getting a little bit closer to that pocket, what we're calling a pocket, downtown revitalization project. Getting a little, put some more numbers on the project.
Did we ever hear anything from the county? I know they got some buildings scheduled, I don't, imagine they're not on a calendar yet when they're going down, but...
They're working on it. I was just gonna say...
What's county gonna do at the old barber shop? I see somebody busted a window on it.
Oh yeah, naturally.
I think that's a demo. So I wanted to say, Brian, also the EDA is gonna be reviewing the Lincoln Place project. The drawings for that, the redo of the parking lot and the retaining wall that's gonna fall in down, so. Be pretty busy next week in our meeting.
Oh, good.
I got one, I think.
Yes?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Serbian Christmas coming up on Saturday. It's sort of an overlooked holiday, but it's one that I really enjoy in my household because sarmas are on the menu.
Ooh.
Yes, so everybody out there, Greek Orthodox affiliation, Merry... My wife told me how to say it, but if I did, I'd slaughter it, so I'll just say Merry Serbian Christmas. Something, Kristo Kristo.
Well, now when you get home, she's gonna say, don't you listen to me.
She don't watch these things.
Send the minutes.
We'll send it a minutes.
Do you, do you need a spelling on that?
You know, I'm really glad you recognize us minorities.
Well, guaranteed, that's why I always thank Jerry too for leaving the Christmas decorations up, whether it's planned or not. Pass a Chris, Orthodox Christmas, it's, it's important to a lot of people in this area, there's, there's plenty of them.
Well, this year you had to put them up.
That's why he leaves them up, I know.
Fight for the wind. Oh. But like I say, I, I hope it's a pretty good year, better than last year. You always look for some improvement, but you see, we're, we're discussing, Jerry, you think we can get some, the independent contractors, talking to big snow piles?
It's possible.
You know what I mean, to get, because they got the big equipment, because I hate to tie our crews up because we have so many streets and alleys and you don't want inexperienced people trying to do that stuff, because our guys know the drill, they do a good job. But the, the bigger equipment for those big piles is...
Our trucks are so small, we need them in those tight areas.
I want you to know, Jerry, that I can get down my alley, but I can't get out of my truck. But I can get down it.
Is that because you're in a candy?
No, no, it's not because I was in a candy dish.
I gotta apologize.
That's okay.
You can body shame, I don't care.
Chief, you got anything else to bring up?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Jerry? Ellen? Anything exciting to tell us yet?
Not yet.
Steph, you got anything to add? Everybody's all refreshed after the holiday? Jackie?
I got nothing, I'm gonna punch it back to Jerry.
I was just gonna mention, you know, I got a call last week from, from Wolfers Men's Hockey Team. They wanted to come up and skate at the Hippodrome on last Saturday. The boys had a scheduled game, so we couldn't schedule that timing for them. They ended up talking to Mr. Nasic and he came up and visited Big Stick right down at the Hippodrome. Looked at all, you know, looked at all the stuff we had down there and took some pictures and it was pretty exciting, so.
It was really nice.
Wanted to come up to Evlith and...
Did they go over to the intruder?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, just wondering.
You know, that Big Stick is gonna need a facelift one of these days. Does IRRB have special fund for that?
So I've been down that, fixed up the stick a couple times with Jerry and I circled back to former people that were here when the second stick was brought in. And that person just happened to be one of the former mayors and he indicated to me that we're not supposed to touch it, we're supposed to just leave it.
That's what I, I remember them saying, everybody just leave it alone.
Don't do anything to the stick.
I'm pretty sure we could get them bushes out of there though.
Did we hear a reason why?
I guess...
Put a screen on the cracks, if you fill those cracks in and we separate the cracks more, they said they'll leave it at that.
Yeah, but it's getting worse and worse and there's a lot of traffic looking at that stick down there.
It wouldn't be a bad idea if somebody professionally, even a structural person, could be pulling their tape off, we can see...
What does it cost for a new stick?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Hundred grand, hundred and fifty?
Who do we talk to, who did we get the stick from?
Uh, that one was a lot of like response and somewhere, but they, they want nothing to do with it anymore, so.
Well, that's kind of BS.
I talked to them about some other issues on it and...
And they tell us to leave it alone, don't do anything to it?
That's what they told me when I checked on it, that was probably six years ago.
Yeah, well...
Whereas I believe they told Michael, and Michael's here too.
It'll be the only hard to stick with metal bags every three feet.
Well, I think that leave it alone ship has sailed a few years ago. Why don't we, nobody has any objections, inquire with IRRB and maybe find out somebody who would do a job with it, either build a new one or fix it, some quotes?
Yeah, we could look into seeing who knows what's going on.
Because it look, you leave it go any longer, it look like we got it from the Ukraine. It's fricking cracked and broken.
Yeah, I don't want it to turn into a public safety issue either.
Yeah, that's, there's so much traffic looking at that thing all the time.
We fixed up that whole area with pictures and
I mean, that's...
You know, and everything went, it's a nice area in the summertime and there's lots of people going in there.
That's a tribute to all the people who are on those mirrors.
There's a lot of people that stop in there, it's unbelievable, it's still stopping, taking pictures.
Yeah, maybe the Hall of Fame can kick in a few bucks there, you know, solicit some donations, maybe we oughta ask the director. He must know a few people.
Yeah, and I still think they should run that blue line from the hockey Hall of Fame down to the big stick. I, I really do.
Oh, you mean right down the middle of Jones Street?
Yeah. You know, I mean, it takes the people that go up there, there's a lot of people that stop up there and then you just run it right down to the stick.
Years ago when we did the main street, you know, with the different lighting, I always envisioned the, all the way going all the way up Jones Street. Up there, some people see those lights and follow them down.
Oh yeah, just something.
Just so we remember though, that is a common green road, so they have a sign everywhere.
Oh yeah.
And they can pay for the blue paint.
We just have a conversation with them.
So we remember, that's all.
Because I followed a lot of traffic up and down that, because I live off of Jones on Polk and I don't care if it's pink, people don't follow, they don't care about...
and I don't care if it's pink, people don't follow, they don't care about that line, they're all over that road.
I think they have state and federal laws that might mandate the colors that you can put on the streets.
You might be right there, Brian, I think.
But I think the lighting would be within our purview.
Yeah, because I always thought about that, I would, that's when we had the hotel and stuff, people'd say, where do those lights go? You know, follow them downtown. Because we should have a workshop too and maybe get an inventory of the buildings downtown and kind of see what we could do.
Mm-hmm.
You know? Something on there because there's a chance with that school there too, a lot of activity, you could get moving down this way.
Yeah, anything we can do to make the main street busier, I think we should do.
With the businesses and the buildings that are available and see what, what's kind of a theme we could set up for there. Well, Jack, you got anything else?
I don't think.
Joel, you have anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Anyone from the audience? If not, then I'll adjourn the meeting.